What's that? We're all good? All right, I'd like to bring the, uh, Town of Wappingers zoning board of appeals meeting to order, please. May twelfth meeting, roll call, please be.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Delacour?
Here.
Mr. Lorenzini?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, here.
Mr. Galati?
Here. All right, the first order of business tonight on the agenda would be the approval of the meeting minutes from March tenth and April twenty eighth. This really only applies to Tom and Shalise, because, uh, you other guys weren't there yet. So, but let me back up a couple steps. Uh, welcome David and welcome Joe, John. Uh, first planning board meetings for you guys, so, I mean zoning board. So, uh, welcome aboard. And back to the first order of business would be the approval of the meeting minutes of the March tenth and the April twenty eighth. You all had a chance to review?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay. Any changes, revisions, comments?
No.
No, I don't see.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve. Uh, do we need to approve both minutes at the same time, Pete? Is that cool?
I think so. That's good. Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the April twenty eighth and the March tenth minutes.
I have a second.
Another second, eh?
Thank you, so moved. All right, Lisa, did you want to read that executive order now?
It, uh, you can finish on the motion and then I'll read it.
Okay.
Take the vote.
Okay, well, we just, we just do, had a second on the meeting minutes.
Right, so now you need to, to vote, have the members vote.
All right, have a vocal, please be.
Mr. Delacour?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, come in.
Mr. Galati?
Yes.
And let the record reflect, uh, Mr. Barr and Mr. Lorenzini abstained.
Okay.
And so now I'll take a minute. Um, tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's March thirteenth, twenty twenty Executive Order two oh two point one, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members and there is a forum present for this meeting. In addition, we have confirmed that with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. We've fulfilled our legal requirement, notice requirements, by posting a copy of the notice on the door of Town Hall, as the town's bulletin board is inside the Town Hall and not currently accessible to the public, and by posting the notice on the town website. In addition, this is a public hearing and the notice has been duly published in the paper. Thanks, Pete.
Wonderful, I'm glad you read that. All right, so the second order of business tonight, uh, tonight's meeting is a public hearing. Appeal number twenty seven six nine seven. Jason Gordon seeking an area variance of section two forty fifty seven A I of the district regulations in an R forty slash A D zoning district where fifty percent of the house footprint of fourteen oh six square feet divided by two equals seven oh three square feet is required. The applicant can provide two arrays totaling seventeen hundred seventy-five square feet for the installation of a ground-mounted solar system, thus requesting a variance of one thousand seventy-two square feet. The property is located at one sixteen Dusty Trail and is identified as tax grid number six zero five seven zero four seven four four three oh five. All right. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I have a second.
I will second it.
I second it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion.
There you go, John.
Yeah, John seconded it, Pete.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. So the applicant, Jason Gordon, I can see you up on the screen there, Mary Beth. And what we usually do here, uh, Jason, is just ask you for the benefit of the board and anybody else of the public who is listening in to just give us a brief description of, of what you're doing and why you're doing it.
Do you want, uh, I'm Erin with Empire Solar. Do you want me to give that little bit of rundown for the homeowner, Jason?
Sure.
Okay, great. Um, hi, I'm Erin, I'm with Empire Solar. I just wanted to give you a quick, brief description of what we're looking to do here. Um, so we're, this total system size of this system is ninety-two panels. Will be twenty-nine point four four, but there's two separate systems going into two separate meters. So it's really one array that's going to be seventy-six panels. Um, and the whole system size is twenty-four point thirty-two kilowatts. The second array is going to be sixteen panels, and it's a smaller array, it's five point one two kilowatts. Um, both arrays will be no more than twelve feet high, that's the maximum. The homeowner actually wants it much as low to the ground as possible, so anywhere from six to eight feet. Uh, the property itself is on eighteen point seven seven acres, uh, or the array will be, so, um, it's well screened. And the goal for this application, uh, the homeowner is just, um, looking to offset his energy usage, and the only way to do this is by putting it on the ground and not the roof. Um, he'll probably want to maybe chime in, uh, if not, I also have all the questions from B that a homeowner or a neighbor had, had put in, so I can also address those already.
All right, well, let's, let's, we'll take that, let's take that one step at a time. Just a quick question. The, the, the power, it's, uh, obviously you needed to put these solar panels on the ground because you would not be able to put them on the roof for various reasons, right? Now, they wouldn't fit, and there were some other setback issues as well.
Exactly.
Now, the, the, the intent, I think, of, uh, the panels is to not only power up the main residence, but other structures on the, on the property as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, so the, basically, the arrays that are needed to power up multiple structures, gotcha?
Yeah, so that's why, I mean, the fir-, when you look at it with this, this rule that we're trying to ask for variance for, the footprint of the main house is, is small and it seems significant, but with all the structures we're trying to power, how big the property is, that's, you know, that's why we're here.
Gotcha, gotcha. Now, as far as the, the questions that were emailed in, and I, I think I see Regina, Regina and Eric, you're up on the screen there, correct?
Yes, hello.
Um, now, in, in reviewing the questions, okay, so, but they're all, all valid concerns, all valid issues. Uh, however, there are, many of them are not addressed by this board. Many of them will need to be answered by the planning board and, and not the zoning board. It's not under our purview to, uh, make any sort of ruling along those, those lines. There are, there are a few questions, Erin. You're still there, Erin?
Yeah.
You hear me, Erin?
Yeah.
There are a few questions I, I think that we, the ZBA can answer tonight. Uh, well, no, and I'll read them off. If you think there's any others that we, we may address tonight, we'll, we'll take that, uh, under advisement.
Okay.
But the first one I can see is, you know, why, why on the ground and not on the roof? And maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit.
Um, well, as you see, this is a very large system. Uh, the roof structures that are on the property is just not feasible, there's many setbacks that we need to abide by. Um, and this would be the best way in order to get a system that big, so I'm, you know, we would, we would never be able to get ninety-two panels on the roof.
Where, where exactly on the property are you looking? That was our main concern.
That, that was the next question.
We're getting there.
Yeah. Go ahead, Erin, you can answer that.
Can I just ask, we, we're going to let the board ask their questions first, and then we're going to go around the board for their participation questions, and then once that's done, we'll open it to any remaining questions that the neighbors may have, so.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
So I, I asked my questions. Any of you guys have any other questions? Board members?
I think she's, Lisa suggested maybe should we wait for it?
No, Shalise, if you have questions now, ask them.
Oh, now, okay. The size, I like putting two different sizes. You can't to put like two same size? Like one is, uh, only, uh, six panels, or one is seventy-six panels?
Yeah, because that's going to one meter, and it's a much smaller meter, it's only powering a cottage. So that's why there's the tiny one, and the big one is going to the main.
Does it matter?
Um, y-, I mean, yeah, I've, what do you mean? If you wanted to make it even, is that the question?
Yeah, I mean, uh, right.
So make it, what would it be, ninety-two times divided by two? I think it has to do with running the wires. Uh, we split it into two, we'd have to then take panels and, from one array going if that makes sense, one going to one, one, one going to another meter. Uh, I think it'd make it more difficult, and I, I don't know, I, I'd, the Gordon's, uh, would you guys, uh, what would you think about that, if that was a possibility? Instead of having one large array, one small one, I, I, you know, and I'm, I'm going to text Adam and make sure this is okay right now. But I think they're really looking to see if we can make the arrays into two.
I mean, to me, to me, it's all one array, I mean, if we're being, it's all logistics here, so it's, it's the, it's an equal, you know, it's a number of panels, right? I figured out the total, okay. We're only breaking it into two arrays because one has to be dumped into one meter and one has to be dumped into another.
Yeah, exactly.
Point of view. I mean, it's, it's ex-, what's the number of panels, uh, Erin, total? For both systems? Ninety-six panels?
Oh, it's ninety-two panels. Yeah, so it would be forty-six and forty, let me see, it's got to be.
It'd be, I mean, to me, it's just, if for all I care, we could put them all together on the same structure.
Okay, yeah.
You wire, you know, seventy-two to the house and you wire the other, the A to the cottage.
Have you?
If you want to write it, but I, I don't know why. In my opinion, it's really two arrays, it's one array.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm trying to see less surface area. Uh, like in, from ninety-two, it can be reduced by using high efficiency so that square area, we don't need that much. That's the real question behind.
Well, I mean, the house.
That's the question.
Panel you are using.
Could we use less panels? Could we use more high-efficiency panels and have less panels? I think that's the question, right?
Oh, okay.
That's the question, right. That's the real question.
Well, the real question is, I mean, if we went in higher wattage panels, and that has to, that will just the, the cost of the system for the homeowners. So this is what we, you know, agreed upon with the Jinko three twenties, if we went up, it would se-, it would, it could significantly increase the syst-, the cost. Uh, so they're, they're trying to look to save money here, right? So if they can do it in this fashion with saving money.
Sure, understood.
Yeah. Sorry, I just thought you meant to break down the arrays.
How much power per, per?
Sorry?
So how, how much power per panel? Is three hundred watts?
Three hundred and twenty watts, three twenties.
Oh, three and twenty, okay, so.
Yeah.
So because of the cost, and the next higher one is like three?
There's three thirties, there are three thirty-fives, there's, there's several different panels. Uh, I think three seventy-five, but again, the higher we go, the more money it's going to be, so we don't, you know, we don't want to get into that territory.
Please. All right.
Lisa, go ahead, you saying something?
Is the
The cost per, per?
Energy that's being, that proposed to being generated by the panels, is that, um, typical of what's usually developed by the house, or you anticipate, or the, the entire property, rather? Are you anticipating excess capacity by these panels, or is it strictly what's needed for the residence and cottage and barn, et cetera?
Uh, it's based off the annual usage. Um, we can't go over a hundred and ten percent of usage, so that's how we base our designs off of.
So this is definitely not a commercial enterprise looking to sell energy back, et cetera, just putting that out for the record.
Not that I know of, nope.
Okay.
No, that is certainly not our intention, our
Yeah.
Our intention is to power the property and also to provide an environmental benefit. We care very much about our eighteen point seven seven acres here in Wappingers, and we want to be good stewards of the environment. And I do want people to know that we've had the conversation about having, trying to get as small panels as we can and trying to make it as small as possible. Um, because, you know, it's not the prettiest things in the world. We want to do the right thing for the environment, but we want to make sure that we don't make it as, you know, in, make it intrusive as we can. Um, so I just want people to know that.
Sure. Any, any other board members?
Three twenty-five, uh, is very standard high side. In my opinion, three hundred and twenty, twenty-five kilowatts per panel is, is on high side of efficiency in the market today. Very high, is like three fifty, three, as you said, but that's the best, right?
Gotcha. Gotcha. Any other questions from the board?
I have no questions, Pete.
Hey.
I have no questions.
No, I have the questions that are across the answer.
Okay, so can we, should we move on to then, uh, Regina's question? Right? Regina and Eric, I, I think your last question was where the panels would be located?
Yes.
That's our first question.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I got, I have them all. Um, so the, um, if you want to look exactly where it's located, everything's online, I saw, uh, on, uh, the Town of Wappingers website. Uh, it is, so to explain it, it's over a hundred, um, it's one thousand one hundred square feet from the front of the property. Uh, a hundred and twenty square feet to the rear. From the west side, it's four hundred and ten square feet, and from the east side, it's sixty-five square feet. So, um, Regina, I believe
Hold that. Because that's, that's, do you have a visual of that that we could see?
Like compared to the house or to the, where the horses are, would make more sense to us.
Give, give me one second, I'll be able to share the screen that has that on it, so if you have other questions while I pull it up and you want to discuss those. Okay, and I'll put it up on the screen. Unless, Erin, I don't know if you have it handy in front of you.
I have the plans, I don't know how to switch to those.
No, they're online, so I can, I'll share the screen.
Yeah.
Give me one second.
Yeah, the, the G I S map that was in the package indicates where the panels are.
The, uh, the stakeout survey that was on Saturday, is that still in place?
I'm sorry, I, I was looking at the location, you said the sta-, yeah, where we had staked it out, where it should be the location.
You, you guys had staked it out, are, are those stakes still there?
No, we took them out because we didn't want the horses to pull them out and run around the paddock with their mouths.
Fair enough.
Can you, uh, pop that up on the screen, Lisa?
Get it in, one more second, I'm just about ready, hold on.
All right.
You have, uh, share screen? You're really testing my technology at this point. Can everybody see that?
We got something going on.
Okay, you don't.
Yes, yes.
Well, you succeeded.
Can, can you zoom in?
I believe I can, but, um.
Really, really testing you.
You are. Um, oh, I know, I, I have to move you guys out of the way, that's why, hold on.
Okay.
There we go, now I can zoom. Okay, um, let's go a little further.
Maybe, maybe you put your, your cursor on it.
Yes.
For, for Regina and Eric's. If, if you put your cursor on it.
Right, I don't know if everyone can see that, I may even be able to, now you're really testing my skill. But, you know, there's a way that I could actually draw a circle, but this is what we're talking about up in this corner of the property.
Right.
And Regina. Regina, you're a twenty-seven four-wheel drive, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's on the opposite side of your property.
Right, a direct visual from our house directly across, we see it. Because we see the end of the property from here. And it's, and the angle, we're all so concerned about.
The angle will not be anywhere near your, the, the two top, well, we're skipping questions now, but if you're looking at that tiny square, the two top ones is going to be the highest point, where the two smaller ones are going to be the lowest, and as I said, we're going down to six, uh, probably six feet at the tallest part, so if anything, it's a rate, it's going to be angled towards the homeowner, not, not your property.
I thought it was twelve feet was the highest.
Can you, can you tell us?
It could go as high as twelve feet.
What's that?
It could go as high as twelve feet, but the homeowner wants to lower it for, anywhere from six to eight. So it's actually, you're going to see the side view of it more than you're going to, it's not going to be angled toward your house.
Can you tell us the actual dimensions of what these two arrays would be?
Uh, I can, but again, all of this is online, all of the dimensions are online, so the longest, the biggest one is a hundred and four feet by thirteen feet, and the smaller one is twenty-one feet by thirteen feet.
So just going along the edge of the property facing east?
North edge.
Yeah, towards, yep, east side.
But there's a whole bank of trees there, why would you want them there and not on the top of the hill?
First, it's not going to be right next to those trees, it's going to be away from it, you're looking at a very small diagram, and, I mean, this is the location we discussed with Almar.
So are we going to be?
If I might add, if I might add. If I might add, they might, they need to face southwest, that's, that's.
Exactly.
Yeah, they're not, they're not going to face east, they face southeast, they spell, they face southwest.
So south is open, but west?
If you look at the north hour, the panels will be facing the south direction, they're collecting the south, the southernmost exposure.
So basically facing right at our house?
No.
At the driveway.
At the driveway, which is right here.
At whose driveway? Their driveway or our driveway?
Our driveway.
Uh, your, your driveway.
Well, that's unpleasant, that's where our house is.
No, they're faced, they're facing right toward.
They're not facing towards your, that's, I, I feel like you're not understanding, it's facing more towards this long driveway and the prop-, the ma-, the homeowner's house.
That's what I asked, and the other person said us.
The homeowner's, right.
Okay, let's, 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 let's do one at a time, should, Shalise hang on one second? Uh, Erin, can you answer, or Jason answer the question?
There you go.
The, the panels will be facing.
I'm sorry.
That was a good, that was a good drawing, whoever just put that out, and that's where they're facing, that's correct.
Okay, perfect, yes.
Perfect.
So can I ask which property is Regina's property, just so I'm oriented on here?
Uh, you can, you can see where the, there's a little curve in the yellow, I believe that's us, our house is there.
He's going to ask him, the four hundred foot measurement over on the left side of the path.
Thank you, okay.
Are, are we the only property owners, um, other property owners that are on this Zoom right now? That order your property?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Gallow and Tim Conflin were on, and they also border our property.
Uh, Pat Murphy is not on this.
We don't know the Murphys.
Oh, they, uh, empty, yeah.
It's an empty lot, but he owns it, he's trying to sell it. Um.
Do we want to continue with some of the other questions that they'd asked?
Oh, I don't, Erin, there, there's several on here that.
Yeah, I have the whole list, that's why I, I was.
Well, but there, there are several on here that we are not going to be addressing.
Okay, that's right, correct.
Right. So I, I think why on the ground was, was fine. You know, where the panels are located was fine, and when, and I, I think was why on the ground, right at that. Yeah, that, any, any of the other questions that were listed in the, the email that was sent to the town, I don't think is applicable by, uh, this board or under this board's purview. Do we really fall under the planning board? We're, we're, we're pretty much, you know, zoned in on the square footage of the panels as it relates to the footprint of the house. And that's pretty much what the zoning board is, is here to, uh, review tonight.
Right, just for the benefit of the public that may be on the call, this matter will be going back to the planning board, and they will be granting, um, or deciding on whether to grant any approvals for the project. The only thing that is before the board tonight is there is a rule in the code which says you can only have a ray, an array that's fifty percent of the structure of a house. And the purpose of that rule is generally to prevent, um, commercial arrays from going into residential properties. So what's before the board is whether to grant a variance from that requirement to allow these larger arrays, but it's not granting permission for the, of the arrays to be put in, it's just focusing on that narrow issue. And then it goes back to the planning board for them to grant the special use permit if they so decide later on. And there will be a public hearing before the planning board on the issues. So what you're talking about in terms of glare is a planning board issue and the size of the array, et cetera, so. I don't know if that's helpful, and if you have any questions for the lawyers or for the applicant.
Correct.
I, I have a question, Pete.
Who's that?
This is Tom.
Hey, hey, hang on a second, uh, Tom, Lisa, can we go back to the meeting screen?
Yes, we can, hold on.
I would like you to leave it up, Pete.
All right, hold on.
Okay. It's up?
All right, Tom, go ahead.
Okay, so when we went out Saturday, uh, we were looking, we're standing, um, next to the array, inside the array, basically, and we were looking, um, basically, at that point, we were looking, um, towards what would be, I'm going to say, um, it would be basically on the west side, I believe. Uh, it was where that the arrow says north, right there. Excuse my voice, I have a frog in my throat. Um, that's the direction, I believe, we were looking, fellas, right? Mr. Gordon, Mrs. Gordon?
We were, we were standing in that location looking basically in all directions, Tom.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that, that was the only house we could see, I believe.
And, and that's my point. Now, we were looking at a house that had a trailer in the front, is that the, um, Ms. Hodgenaki's house, right there?
That's us.
The travel trailer in the front yard?
Yes.
Okay, that, thank you very much, and there were, and the house was covered, um, by trees, we couldn't actually see the house. At that point.
Or I would think he would see the house, it's right next to it, it's in the driveway.
Okay, yeah, we, where we were standing, looking at it, we didn't see it, so that's what I was trying to make sure, what house you had, so I knew, um, yeah, there was only one there, I just wanted to make sure that that was the one that was yours. Thank you.
It's a direct, yeah, there's no trees in the way.
Come back. Okay. So, uh, any more questions from, uh, Regina or I'm sorry, Regina or Eric? I think the board exhausted their questions.
Uh, I don't know, I sent a bunch, I, I, I guess some of them you're not going to answer because you saved that for the planning.
That's correct.
I personally find them to be an eyesore, and, uh, that was our main concern. And we really don't want to look at them at all. Even though it's not our property. So to be honest, Erin, that's, that was our main thing.
Okay.
And there's a huge dollar, uh, plant across the street, um.
There's fourteen acres, next to him, has a fourteen-acre site right across the street. So I don't know the environmental impacts, but So I don't know the environmental impacts, but
When you're on the ground, fourteen acres site that I see on my master bedroom window.
Oh, yeah, right, it's, yeah, I'm gonna like
Even though it's pretty far away from you, but, uh, um, will the hearing be in person or will, will it be another meeting? Cause I'm finding this meeting a little unorganized.
Well, I think the planning board meeting will be similar to this, uh, we don't know, we have no idea when we'll be able to resume public meetings.
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe if you guys give, whatever, if we get approved today or whatever, my next step would be going back to planning and then I'd have one more meeting of planning before public hearing, most likely, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
So what is the purpose of us having questions and being on this? It, it really doesn't matter.
Well, well, it does matter, you could submit those to the planning board. Your questions, most of the questions that you've listed do not pertain to the variance as we review it. But, but you know, they're valid issues and they can be raised with the planning board at that stage, when the planning board has their public hearing.
So aren't there multiple homes on this property?
Buildings, there's a cottage and a house.
Buildings or homes?
There's a farm, it's, right, it, what's all, there's a, there's a main house, there's a cottage, right? That's, the cottage is going to be the smaller array, main house and all the other accessories are gonna be on that, uh, larger array.
So will the other accessories require double the electricity than they would normally need, double the solar?
It's not quite that, it, it has to do with the footprint of the house and it doesn't, that's just a standard that was put in, um, in the code by the lawyers. Basically, it's a, a reference to try and be a determining factor for, um, whether something is commercial or residential. And so it's not unusual to have something that may, uh, you know, a house that has a small footprint, uh, because there's barns and outbuildings, it may require more electricity. On the flip side, it might not be the case where you have a large house, but if it's energy efficient, you may not even need the fifty percent, you may need less. So it's not really a correlation to how much energy they have been using or will be using. It basically is a, just a legal mechanism to try and keep tabs on whether they, uh, solar arrays are commercial or residential. So what, what we've heard from the applicant and their consultants is that they are limited to no more than a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent of their annual electric usage, which means that whatever they've been using over the past years, it's not like they can put up massive arrays and generate extra money and do that. They are limited to the capacity tied in some way to the capacity of what was the prior, uh.
So the solar representative, she said the height, the max would be eight feet and the length, which she didn't
I, I said twice, uh, the, the, you can go as high as twelve feet, but the homeowner does not want it more than six to eight feet.
Right, and what's the length? You can tell us that in feet.
Yes, it is, it's a hundred and a hundred and four feet long and thirteen feet wide.
That's first, right?
The big one.
Which direction does that run again?
They're both in the same direction.
Our master bedroom, this, this house has twenty-four foot ceilings. And our master bedroom is very high and it stares right out over that property.
It's going to be directed towards the homeowner's house, not towards your house. But again, these are questions we have to go over with planning.
Out of eighteen eight, it has to be in that spot.
It's the complete opposite side of your property.
No, I know, I see that, we appreciate that, at least, that is nice.
We're just kinda saying, we don't really want to see it.
Right, we didn't care on the eighteen eight, if it was somewhere around the other side of the hill, we'd be very happy.
We just don't want to look at it.
And we're kinda wondering why we're the only homeowners on this, on this call.
Well, I'm required to send out, within, uh, what's the buffer? How many feet?
A hundred feet.
Yeah, I was required to send out a mailing, so everybody, it was in a hundred feet was on, was notified.
The neighbors, the neighbors
Of the board's property.
Donna Gallo is the front neighbors, we have nine acres in front of their property, we are on here as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, do, who was that? Please, one, one at a time, say that again, just state your name for the record.
Tim Conklin and Donna Gallo, we have the nine acres in front of their property.
Okay.
He's safe, he's on the other side.
Okay.
They're not near him.
All right, so as far as the other questions on
Can I just say one thing, Pete?
Sure, go ahead, Jason.
So the flip side is that, you know, it's having Donna around here because they want to make sure we don't put on the front side, so and we understand everyone's concern that, you know, they don't want it in front of their window, but, you know, we gotta be careful, you know, no matter where we put it, somebody potentially won't be happy with it, so are we allowed of a solar in this town or are we not? I guess that's the question.
Well, sure, you are, you're allowed to put it in under certain constraints. And I, and I think, you know, we did a site visit, all five of us. And, uh, it sounded, looked to me as though, you know, you're putting it in a corner where, uh, it's best served. And then, then of course you have to get the functionality of it as well, you know, and you can't stick it under a tree. Then you're gonna defeat the purpose. But it, uh, when we were on the site there, you know, standing in the exact location of the panels and basically doing a three sixty, uh, it seemed like, uh, you guys did a pretty good job of locating it on the property.
I have a question. That being said, on the top of the hill, you would get more exposure east and west. When you put that corner, and that's fact.
Well, the, 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 the engineering that was done by the solar contractor was, you know, it, it, I, I would think they placed it in the best place they saw it. And we're, we're, we're not gonna debate that tonight.
Okay, so it's in the best, for the owners, but not in the best place for the neighbors, basically.
But again, if he, if he moved it, what, who's to say another neighbor won't be upset for the location that you're requesting?
We are, we're the ones
Nobody's on here but us, and we have the, we have the biggest view of that property.
That's why we're here.
And we moved in here for privacy and
And because it was so beautiful.
And, you know,
It's, it's
You know, there's a wildlife factor, which we want to address here.
Again, again, folks, again, these have been many issues, again, valid points, I'm not trying to, trying to cut you off, but they're valid points that could be raised at the planning phase. They're really not issues or questions that the zoning board are gonna
Well, if, from my understanding, if you approve the variance, then it goes forward with the planning, how does the planning stop it?
Right, but then the planning, planning board does their review and then there's a public hearing at the planning board level as well to listen to comments.
What's the timeframe for that from here?
Say it again?
What's the timeframe from, for that from here?
I don't know.
They, they will need to go back to the planning board, they'll need to do a, advise the planning board that they've received or not received their variance this evening. And then the planning board will decide if it needs more information or if it has all the information that it needs and then it will set a public hearing for a future meeting. So we're not sure at this point how long we'll be under the executive orders that don't allow us to be in-person meetings. Um, but, uh, if it does, it will be another public hearing under this format. If not, um, and if we're able to go back to social distancing and having in-person meetings, there will be in-person meetings held at the town hall. All of the documents, when it comes time for the planning board, will be on the website of the town hall, the same way they were on for this. So you'll be able to see any revisions to the plans and look at all of the specifications for the plans. And the maps and everything are on, they're on the website now for this meeting and they will be on the website for the planning board meetings. Uh, what are they, at least a month and a half away?
I have a question.
Good night, Tom.
Okay, um, uh, this is probably for both Erin and Mr. and Mrs. Gordon. Uh, and I don't know if it would be helpful to bring up the, uh, Lisa, I hate to do this to you, but, uh, would we be able to, excuse me for moving, uh, provide some sort of vegetation screening between, I know, I know where you have it, is in, is in the middle of, uh, your, not the middle, but it's sort of in the horse, uh, pasture, I guess would be the word, field.
They're not gonna like
Uh, would you be able to provide some sort of a screening, vegetation screening, trees, uh, bushes that would prevent the Hodge-Nackys from seeing the, um, that seems to be the sticking point here, s, their visit, they don't want to see it. If there were, um, some sort of vegetation, like a screen put into place, could that be done?
Uh, well, I don't, of course, have to talk to the Gordons and we'd have to discuss where, well, of course, we've done screening before. Um, a lot of these different towns require screening or, uh, so that's something we can definitely talk about, but it would just have to be up to the Gordons as far as where and how. Um, if anything, my thought in looking at these plans, uh, I wouldn't put them anywhere near the array. I'd want, I'd think that putting them closer to where, um, you know, these, uh, neighbors are would be more sufficient to block their view. But again, uh, we'll see, I think that's usually a planning thing, right?
I was just about to, in this instance, um, typically if you're granting a variance, it's not unusual for the zoning board to put conditions on the variances. However, in this instance, the condition that you're suggesting is really more appropriate for the special use permit, which is what the planning board will be granting. The only thing that this board is concerned with at this point is the fifty percent, um, the house to allow the larger array. And so that's what the, the board, if you had conditions in some way related to that, that would be appropriate for this board. But because what you're talking about is screening it from view, that's a condition that the planning board is more appropriate for the special use permit of the planning board.
My other concern is the reflection of these panels, um, I know that's a, that's a pretty intense, uh, you know, light. And, uh, I know that it can ruin your property, it can also damage things.
Again, I, I think, I think Lisa, again, wouldn't that be a planning board's review?
And maybe what we can recommend is that the applicant provide some of this information to the planning board so that it would be available to you for, prior to the next meeting as part of the public record. So I think we'll be able to show, um, the direction of, that the array is facing in relation to the neighboring properties. And you'll be able to see whether it is or is not affecting your property.
And it would certainly be appropriate to talk to the planning board about screening.
Yeah, agreed. Agreed.
It's an intense light, if you ever cast one, it's pretty intense.
I, I don't know that to be the case, but again, planning board issue, right? So, any other questions?
I don't know, I don't know what I can ask.
You can't ask anything.
Yeah.
It's a whole planning board.
Thanks.
Well, well, the, the questions I reviewed are the ones we're gonna review tonight. Any other questions, you can review with the planning board. Except there's no, no other questions from any other people that are, that are logged on, I see a few names popped up. I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, so moved. All right, so the public hearing then is now closed.
Uh, can I, can I make a statement?
Good.
Okay, can we close the public hearing, but go ahead.
No, never mind, I'll save it.
Okay. All right, then, so then, now can I have a motion to either deny or grant the variance to the applicant, please?
We'd fight now, that's it? With this kind of knowledge? Okay.
Yeah, we close the public hearing.
You're right, stop talking, we get it.
Um, I, I have a question, so, um, I'm sorry, who was talking first, who wanted to talk, I apologize.
I was Lisa, but go ahead, Tom, I'll talk when you're done.
Okay, I just had a question, um, I wanted to know if it was possible that we could get together, um, in an executive session and have a discussion about this?
We have, um, Tom Bar, are you on?
Yes, I am.
And if you, can you create a room for us?
I can do that.
Thank you.
All right, so for everybody's knowledge, the board is gonna go into executive session, so you're gonna be basically silenced out for a little while and then, and then we'll be back, so hang on, don't go anywhere.
And
Jason, the board.
So you need a motion to go into executive session? We need a motion, second and a vote.
Is I make a motion, please, to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session since I put it forth.
Second.
I have a second, dude. All right, so moved.
No, now you need a vote, so if you
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Can you roll call, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm here.
We need a roll call.
I'm here, Mr. Bar.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Delacorte. You're muted, you're muted, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Lorenzeni.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Cuculati.
Yes.
And Tom, I see that the town attorney is on the Zoom call as well, so if you can invite him into the executive session, that would be helpful.
Sure, is Barbara also going or no?
Sure.
Everybody, it's going to send you an invite request to